I was reading an article last night that there's another variance to the Omicron. And they're not sure whether that's more contagious than this one is already contagious. That there are apparently in the Omicron, four variations that they discovered. So they don't think it's going to be the next variant of Pi, that would be Pi, in the week after that, but that there may be another variance to this particular one.
They keep coming.
Who knows? Well, and you just don't know. So the difficulty with that is we can't really plan too far out. So as you know, we've canceled all of our activities through February and March. The Brazilian community is going to do a Valentine's dance. We were looking at St. Patrick's Day. And yesterday, we even talked about doing the Savior again. And we just said, it's just too hard to plan anything. And you just get concerned about people being in a gathering and what you're gonna do. So we're just gonna, I think we need to wait till Easter. And we'll just do our devotions and keep going.
Oh, Easter. I'm on my day. I'll change that. It's blocked out going on this Friday. I thought you said it was in March, the Lent, but we're gonna wait.
What's March, Jay?
Did we set up again?
No, I think we'll wait.
You're gonna wait.
Yeah, we had said we were gonna wait till Easter.
Can we change it? We're doing now?
I'm sorry?
We're not doing anything until...
Well, we've come, today we've come to the end of season one. So I thought we would take a little bit of a break to see what's gonna happen. And then we'll see what we're gonna do. If we need to, we can try and pick up through Lent. If things start to ease up and the numbers are getting better. But if we're still having the same, I mean, I don't know about you, but I don't know any family that doesn't have somebody that's at least been afraid of being sick if they're not already sick at some point or is quarantining because of it. So, and that's a problem. When you have to quarantine, you know, it just turns your world upside down. I mean, I thought about that yesterday. We came back, we went up to countryside, you know, and we had to be tested to get in.
No, you're not.
Yeah, and I said, well, if it comes back positive, what are they gonna, I have to leave. They're not masked. So, you know, we had to go around before I left anyway, but that's a good story. But, so it's just, it's leaving our world, everything's in parentheses. So I mean, we need to be careful. We try to be careful, but at the same time, I think we want to be able to look at that. So we'll look to see as we go forward how the numbers go. When will we start up again? And try and do something in Lent, if we can. I didn't see the streaming Sunday. You did. You said that there were, I did mention that he had teased us that there were three miracles that took place during the filming of season two.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He does a nice job explaining it.
Alright.
So it's worth watching.
Worth watching it, okay. And he announced that they're gonna start doing, they've not started filming yet, right? They're waiting for the set to be finished.
Right.
But he gave a, he gave a, behind the scenes, look at the set that they're building. Right?
Yes.
Done?
He said at the beginning that he was gonna give some tentative dates for the next series. I didn't catch that.
He did say that.
He said March.
For the filming?
Yeah. Oh, for the filming. I thought the release of season three, but hell.
My understanding is that they haven't filmed season three yet.
Oh, no.
But they just finished, they just finished the funding around Christmas. Because part of the funding for this was that they were building the set. And then they had to make, and they wouldn't start filming until the set was finished.
Right.
So, and I'm guessing it's almost done if it's not done already then. That was part of why they were doing this particular livestream. It was a tease to season three.
They only used some of the sets of film. He said they'll be able to use some of it.
And they used, some of what they used in season two, they filmed parts of season three at the same time. So my, because I don't know what all those pieces of it are. Depending on how they're gonna break the whole thing.
It's worth watching. It's long, it's long, it's almost time.
Yeah, well, he likes to talk.
I have a weird...
I expect...
He's so good.
I was gonna say, I'm a hot following kind of black man, you know. And I guess if they just wanna know him, we'd be pretty good.
I just want a little synopsis. I like your one. Okay, yeah.
Thank you. Any questions before we come to the last? So the, really, the arc of season one leads us to today. And so there's a whole understanding. The characters all come into play today. And then they introduce a new character who will show up again in season two. And so in that, it leads us to the unexpected. What does it mean to be the chosen? And who Christ will call? And then how they will recognize Him or know Him and respond. And that's part of what we've been going through in these episodes of season one. So last week, we saw that we had the encounter between Nicodemus and our Lord. Sorry. So, between Nicodemus and our Lord. And so they met on the rooftop, and it was at night. Remember, there was lots of candlelight. And the Lord apologized to Nicodemus. He said, "I asked for more candles, but the owner said it would draw more attention." Because the human eye is naturally drawn to light. Of course, he's playing on John's, think about light and darkness. Christ is the light of the world, but they come in darkness because Nicodemus is still in the shadows. He can't see. He doesn't want to come into the light to be recognized as a follower of the Lord. But at the end, they have a very touching encounter in their embrace. And so they leave, and they leave with the invitation. And Nicodemus realizes that who Jesus of Nazareth is, is probably what he's been waiting for. Not really sure. He wants some reassurance of that. And the Lord invites him to join Him, that they're leaving. And he invites him to join Him. And he says, "Well, where are you going? What are you doing?" "Well, not really sure. You just have to come and see, and see what's gonna happen along the way." So that leads us into where we're gonna be in this particular episode. We're gonna see that they're, they're gonna leave Capernaum. So the disciples, here they are. This is kind of all of them as a group now.
No, right.
What's that?
Oh, I thought you were showing us.
I should have to show them at Earth. So these are, these are the disciples on their way out of Capernaum. And on their way, they think to the Jordan and down to Jerusalem. So of course, we have Mary Magdalene. And Matthew now, he's a disciple because he was called last week. And then you have Simon and Andrew are with the Lord. Okay, and we're gonna see them interacting today in what they have to do. And this is, this is a larger picture of the group making their way, sorry. Making their way out of Capernaum.
While their families stay behind, their wives, their children, what happens to all those?
Well, we're not really told. We do see through parts of episode one, season one, excuse me, that they do go back and forth. Zebedee says to his sons, "Don't worry about fishing. I'll get people to work." So James and John leave their father to follow Jesus. He presumably runs the business while his sons are away. We see that when they're, at one point, the Lord sends Simon back. He says, "You have business to attend to." So he goes back to his house. And that's the whole thing with his mother-in-law, who is there now and who was coughing last week in the episode. So we'll see what's gonna happen to that. But then the last person we meet today is, in the scriptures, she is only known as the woman at the well. So, but we see her today outside of Jezreel, in the country of Samaria. Okay, so you have to understand that, as we know from the scriptures, the Samaritans and the Jews hated each other. They were antagonistic to each other. And so if you're in Galilee in the north and you wanna go to Jerusalem, the most direct route is to cut right through Samaria. It's a direct route. It's a little bit up and down through the mountains, but it's direct. If you wanna take the easier route, which most Jews did, they would go down to the bottom of the Sea of Galilee, travel along the Jordan River till you got to Jericho, and then climb up through the mountains into Jerusalem. It's probably about twice the journey to go that way. But the other issue, as we'll hear, is that Samaritans were hostile to Jews. And that was because they argued about what was authentic worship. Because the Jews claimed if you didn't worship God in the temple in Jerusalem, it didn't count for anything. It wasn't valid. And so God didn't listen. If you didn't worship in their temple, which meant you had to pay their tax, buy their animals, it was all a commerce. Again, at any age, when it comes to religion, when you wanna follow the money. And so that was part of the conflict between the Jews and the Samaritans. They had destroyed each other's temples. They had, in the war with the Maccabees, the Samaritans had fought against the Jews. So they picked up weapons against them. We'll see, I think it's James that makes reference to that in the dialogue with our Lord. So we have to realize that, so that there's two things at play here. One is the direct route, the fast route. The one that GPS would take us is through Samaria. But that's the toll road. You gotta pay a price. Because you're gonna be perhaps spit on. You may be robbed. You could be violently attacked. There's a price to be paid to go through Samaria. That's the fast road, the direct road, but it's a toll road. You can go around it like anything else. It's the longer way. It's the easier way. It's the way that most of the Jews would go. Because the price was too high. They couldn't afford to pay that, to put it in modern terms. Okay?
Can you tell them about the beginning of this so they can connect the well?
Oh, and so the beginning is about, I'm sorry, because I forgot about that. So at the very beginning, as we did, remember last week, we saw Moses fashioning the bronze serpent that would be lifted up. And if people who looked at that, they would be saved. So then we see in the Old Testament, it's Moses that comes onto the well looking for a drink, for a drink as well. And it's the same well. So that the opening scene, and then at the end, when the Lord meets up with the woman from Jezreel, it's the same, it's the same well that we're talking about. Okay? Was it Mary? Or Darlene?
Darlene, I think.
Darlene?
Darlene.
Do you have a question? Was I...
How many apostles do we have now? Or who's missing?
Judas.
Judas is missing.
He isn't single. So you have a few. James and John, Simon and Andrew, Nathaniel, Tom, Thomas.
Little James.
Yeah. You have Little James, and... I don't know if Jude Thaddeus is not yet.
I think so.
There were a couple that, there were a couple that get called at the beginning of season two. And then the last, the 12th is called at the final episode of season two. By the end of season two, he has the 12th. It takes to that, it takes to the end of season two. And it ends with, it actually ends as he calls the 12th apostle. Which, and they set that up through the whole episode eight of season two is, if you pay attention, you figure out who it is. By the way, they set it up. That you actually meet him in the bar. And then, again, it's with, I think Simon's in the bar with him. And they're, of course, Simon's always calculating. They'll always try to find the angle. You know, and that's why he, you realize in season two, why he and Matthew hate each other. Their hatred becomes really tolerable. Because they, they're very similar people. They have different backgrounds, but they're very similar people. Matthew became successful there, Simon did not. And so Simon resents Matthew's success. Because he wanted to have Matthew's success by his own conniving. They made the comment about, they went back to one of the earlier episodes with regard to the, to the fighting. You know, and he says, "Well, Simon doesn't run very fast." "Well, 'cause I got pain in my shins." "Well, yeah, 'cause you were fighting, you know." "Your fighting means, I gave that up. I won't do that anymore." So that's a throwback to what was discussed earlier. Alright? Yes?
It could be my imagination, but when they were leaving their homes to follow Jesus, did they do something to the doorway as they were leaving?
Yes.
What was that?
That's, that's the, the... Mizuza. The Mizuza. Next, next to a Jewish home, there, usually the main door that they go in and out of, there's on the right of the door, Mizuza. And it's a, it's a little container. And inside the container is the Shema. And for the Jewish people, the Shema is the great commandment. And it is, it is, they believe it's a great blessing that you take your last breath saying those words. "Here O Israel, the Lord our God is Lord alone. There are no other gods beside Him." And of course, we think that, you know, the commandment for us is, "You shall have no other gods beside Him." But their understanding is, "There is no other God." And "Here O Israel" is the way the prayer opens. "Here O Israel, the Lord our God is one, the Lord alone. There is no other God beside Him." And again, that's, that we would be mindful that, and it's part of the conversation that happens at the well with Jacob, who's there with his sons, with two of his sons digging the well. And he talks about his grandfather, who was Abraham. Of course, Abraham's son was Isaac, who gave birth to Jacob. And Jacob received the inheritance. And so from him come the tribes of Israel. And so as they're digging the well, the native comes up. It's a great conversation. And he says to him, "You will never, you know, what did you pay for this?" "Well, you know, I think I got a really good price. They paid this stuff." "No, you got taken. Anybody that paid anything for this land got taken. This land is useless." You know, he says, "Don't let the, we just had raining. Don't let the rain here fool you. There's a river underneath, but it runs around this land. It doesn't run through it. It doesn't run under it. You got taken. You've been scammed." "I don't know, I don't think so. My God's gonna take care of it. You will never strike water here. Our God takes care of us." "No, this is Canaan. The gods do not take care of anybody here. The gods have forgotten this land." And then, of course, we know who he is because he says, "I am Jacob. This land was, you know, God called my father, my grandfather, Abraham." "He did? Oh, yeah, well, I've not met him." You know, he's, "Well, where is your temple? You're gonna build a temple?" "No, we don't have temples." "Well, what kind of images do you have?" "No, we don't have any images. We can't have idols." "Really? So how do you know? Well, he hurt my hip once." "Really? You believe in a God you cannot see, that's invisible, that you can't build a temple to, who hurts you, so you walk with the living? This is your God. You make strange choices." "No," he says, "I didn't make this choice. I didn't choose him. He chose me." And just before that, in the, in the middle of that conversation, they called him, "Father, come." Right? "No, we didn't choose him. Father, come." And he comes over, and of course, it's, of course, the images to me is the Beverly Hill Building. So the light, the water coming up through the ground. And, and you see that. And he looks at the father, at the native, and the native goes like, "I don't know how it's happening." And that's when he says to him, "He chose us. He chose us." And that's a lot, that's a lot of what we forget. Because we grow as Christians, we forget that, you know, God revealed himself to the Jewish people. And we just take for granted that God is one. And we make that argument. "Well, it's all the same God." "Well, 5,000 years ago, it wasn't. Everybody had their own gods. And they had lots of them." You know, we study it as Roman and Greek mythology. But to those people, that was their religion. They believed that these were their gods. The God of the sea and the God of the harvest. They have the God of the festival, Bacchus and Poseidon, Zeus and Aphrodite. These were their gods. I mean, we understand that they were myths. But, you know, we don't know because we don't have the right, we don't understand the writings from Mesoamerica. You know, we don't know, but we know that they worshipped incredible gods. And the Incas and the Mayans and the Aztecs. And they were vicious. You know, they would slaughter tens of thousands of people to appease their gods. You know, because they, and they had one for the sun and one for the moon. Where they positioned their altars and their temples. It's only the Jews that said, "No, all of that is just a lie. There's only one God." Nobody figured that out on their own. We think, well, we all know that there's only one God. No, God revealed it to the Jews. He chose them. And so what's the follow-through of that? He's also chosen every one of us. You didn't choose this. God chose you. And that's the point. The chosen is that God has chosen us to be able to, to be able to follow Him and to do His will. And that's what we're gonna see. The dialogue sets up the wonderful converse, the wonderful juxtaposition of the rest of what's gonna follow in this episode. Who does God call? And how do they respond? Who are among the chosen? And it continues to, they really almost beat us over the head with it in the ways that they present it. So of course, we, to realize, because our experience with water is very, very different. We get up in the morning, we take a shower, we wanna brush our teeth, we do our necessities, we flush the toilet. All of that is within our own house in an instant. But in, up until the 20th or the 19th century at the earliest, nobody had that experience with water. And so when you go to Haiti, you realize the different understanding of that. Most people don't have indoor plumbing. So they have to go to a well. Now, the house that the diocese had was right on the edge of the water, and they had an artesian well. And so what happened is they had a spigot that went through the wall that they would turn off and on. So that they would turn the spigot on at 5:00 in the morning. And you would hear the chatter. They would all come. And so that you'd hear the chatter of the women at the, at the well. It wasn't a well that they'd throw a bucket down. They'd turn a spigot, they'd fill their buckets, and then they, they would chatter. And they'd take turns as they stood in line. They'd get all the gossip. They had no telephones. They didn't need to, of course, not a cell phone. But in the original days, they didn't have any. Judy, were you ever, did you ever stay at the house? So the one that was up by the cement or the one down by the water?
Oh.
So you didn't stay down by the house where they had the well? And so, and you'd hear them during, in the morning. And then at a certain time, they would turn the water off. Because if they didn't turn the outside faucet all the way off, it would run and they would waste the water. But the point was, so that's the whole point to realize. See, when you read the Gospel and it says, you know, "Jesus came and He sat down at the well in Checa, and it was noon." "Oh, okay, so it was noon." But you realize they do a wonderful job to present to you why they don't do that. She's struggling. She's sweating. You know, her husband makes the comment, "Look, come here. Let me look at you. Your hair is matted. Your face is red. You're disgusting." Because it's noon time. "Well, I have to go then because the women won't have anything to do with me." You know, and we see in the market how everybody shuns her. "We don't serve your kind." And of course, then we find out why. She grabbed the orange. We don't know why. And she, but she says to him, "If you would, you can't stop me unless you look at me." And see, but if he looks at her, he gives her the dignity that she is. And he won't do that. She drops her money, she grabs the orange, she waits. And he never looks at her. And he walks away. And she walks away. With the orange. Of course, you realize later in the conversation with the Lord, he tells you, he tells her, why she always picks the orange. Because on her wedding night, her husband smelled of oranges. And so the orange is the olfactory reminder to her. It's the reminiscence of her husband, who she has abandoned because she felt unworthy. And he's the same man who will not divorce her. He's the man that she comes back to, signs this divorce. "I will not." That's her husband. That's her husband.
I didn't think that the first one.
That's not the first husband. That's the last husband. Alright, we'll, we'll, we'll get to that. Let me get to the toll thing at the well. Alright, so, oh, that's where we are, actually. I'm sorry. So, so she, she puts the buckets down. And you realize it's a struggle. And as somebody mentioned, you know, you have to realize, she's carrying probably 10 to 20 gallons of water on her shoulders. I mean, that's, that's a lot. If you think about carrying a five-gallon bucket of water, that's a lot of weight. And she's got at least 10, maybe 20 balancing on her shoulders. Think about carrying that at noon time on a July or August day. The sun is at its peak. It's hot. There's, you can see, there's only a covering over the well. Everything else is out in the open. So when she gets to, to her husband, he is, is, you know, her hair is matted. And you see as she comes through the market, nobody even looks at her. They all know who she is. They know what she's doing. What has happened? She's left her husband, and she's now living with another man. Excuse me, she wants him to divorce her so that she can marry him. Because she says, "Well, why are you going in the middle of the day?" "Well, you know why I'm not going. The women won't have anything to do with me." "Well, you can fix that. Just come back here and live with me." Because he's her husband. But she's now left him because we are told later she feels unworthy of him. Because each of her husbands, she's like, like a lot of people, they go from one bad relationship to another. And so because the first husband was abusive, and as the Lord says, was a bad man, she then felt bad going to each, for the relationship till she met the current husband, who he says is a good man. "He's a holy man," the Lord says. But she feels unworthy. So she's abandoned him to live with this other man. And that's what they resent. It's a violation of their law. It's an affront to that. We don't understand that. Because, you know, to us, to shun her in our modern society would be politically incorrect. We can't make that judgment. That's a, this is a very different culture. You break their laws, you violate their laws. You, in order to protect the law, they need to be able to shun you. The purpose for that was to preserve the family. They didn't have welfare. They didn't have AFDC. They needed to be able to preserve families. Because otherwise, the poverty and the destitution would be overwhelming. It is to us, we just find a way to pay for it.
Did they divorce then?
I'm sorry?
Did they believe in divorce?
They, well, Moses allowed them to write a decree of divorce. And that's the conversation that, that Fautina, her name, they give her the name Fautina. That's the conversation that she has with her husband. You know, he comes in, she comes in. It's really very touching. The door opens, and he knows it's her. "Ugh, I was hoping it was a thief or a murderer to put me out of my misery." Because she's, she's left him. And he has no recourse. He can't bring her back. She's living with another man. You know, "Well, come, I wanna look at you." You know, she comes up and, "I need you to sign this. This is the decree of divorce." "You can't do that. You're a woman, you can't divorce me, I can divorce you." That's the way the law is written. And so she says, "But just sign it, let me be on my way, let me be rid of you, you can be rid of me." And just sign this. "Well, I won't sign it, please." And it looks like you have the audacity to say, "Please, let me see it." So he takes it and he reads it, and it's the decree of divorce. "I won't sign it." And that's when she says, "Please," and he throws it into the fire. She realizes he's not going to. And if he won't sign it, there's no recourse that she has. So she's stuck in this in-between state where she's not able to leave. And his comment is, he says, "You are my property, Fotina, and I do not part with my possessions." It's a very telling statement of their cultural understanding that the woman, you know, what we see as our modern experience of, you know, that people fall in love and they make the choice to get married and they live in love. That was not the biblical understanding. Marriages were arranged. And so, you know, the whole thing that still, we still preserve the cultural image. You know, TV has this whole image, you know, who gives this woman to be wed? You know, well, that's the ancient understanding, that the woman was the man's property. That he went from her father to her husband, and if she didn't have a son, she had no rights because she had no man in her life. That's a very biblical understanding. And there's still a lot of that that, for all of our modern enlightenment, is still very much part of our culture and part of our own expectation. And then, of course, we flip from that, the next, that night, we're in Matthew's house. And of course, this is the dinner party that Matthew said, "Well, I never get invited to dinner parties." "Well, you will, this one, it's your house." And so now all the characters that we've known so far are there. There's Simon and Andrew, there's James and John, there's Mary of Bagdala, there's the blind man with his friend. They're all gathered together. And then at that point, the Pharisees show up because they hear the voices. And they're stunned because they, "It is you. We heard voices, we heard laughter, and, oh my goodness, what kind of holy man are you in the house of a tax collector and with these kinds of people? Do you not know who they are? Would you like to come in?" "Oh, my goodness, I wouldn't dare go, and I can't even tell you what kind of people they are. The very words would defy me to say them, these horrible, horrible people that you are now making company with." And Chris, Andrew speaks up, "Well, if it's really a problem, then just leave. Nobody invited you to the door, just leave." Andrew, let him say what he has to say. And so, and the Lord uses that, that of course is the wonderful example. "I've not come to call the righteous but the sinners. I'm not come to call those who are already healthy by the law, I'm calling the others. Understand the words of the Scripture, throwing back to them. It is mercy that I desire more than sacrifice." And of course, that gets them upset, and then Gaius shows up. "Is there a problem here?" "Oh, no, 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 everything's fine, don't worry, we're just moving on our way." So they leave. Gaius comes in. Now, Matthew's a little bit conflicted because now his two lives have intersected. He's got this whole group of people that he's hosting, that he's been the host with the most, and that's never been his experience. And now Gaius comes in to be able to say to him, "You're being a fool. Don't throw this all away. You know, come back before it's too late." "No, no, no, I made my choice."
Isn't it amazing? Because of that background that they had, all that time, even to big demons, I mean, up there in the Jewish, and then these young, these guys were just working, and how they had the faith of what they're doing, what he's doing? Is it because he showed them the miracles that he could do?
Well, that's part of what they believed, but that's also part of what the episode is showing us, the contrast. Okay, so you realize that we have the contrast of, it begins here with Matthew having them in his house, and Gaius comes to try and talk him out of it. And he says to him, "You know, you're making a mistake." And Matthew says to him, "I've made my choice." "What kind of choice is this?" He says, "You're here with the dregs of Capernaum. Look around at this, at who you're with. You had a wonderful life, you had a safe life, you had a comfortable life, you had a luxurious life. You had Rome having your back. Why did you give all that up? You were a success in a worldly sense. You had a sharp mind, you got Gaius to get his promotion on, you got your promotion. Well, yeah, but, you know, you didn't even thank me." "Well, I'm never going to say thank you." Because he said, "Well, I only got the promotion because of you." Well, you know, it was all, it was hand in hand in its own way. And so then Gaius, excuse me, Matthew throws back to him, "But you yourself told Quintus that you were Germanic and that your people surrendered to Rome. So you've already surrendered. You've given in to Rome. I did, but I don't want to live that life." And he can't have what he has because he's not military. He's not the primo ordi."
Sounds like Saul in today's gospel.
Right. So what you see, right. So what you presented, Matthew, is you see that the initial, the tension is between all of these, the dregs, as they're called, or the lowlifes of Capernaum, these people who are eking out a living, who aren't the most honorable of people. I mean, Simon's a conniver, certainly tried to be a thief in his own way. Matthew's betrayed his people, they believe he has blood money. Mary of Bagdala is, at least in the Scripture, at least in this presentation, she's from the Red Quarter, which of course, we would call the red light district or the prostitution area. And she had demons in her background. So you've got these people that are not really desirable. And in contrast to that, and yet gathered around their table, they're laughing, except for Simon, who won't even take a grape from Matthew because he doesn't want to have anything to do with it. "Do you want some grapes, Simon? No." "Would you want to look at me? No. You are in my house, no, I don't want to be here, but I want to be wherever Jesus is, but no, don't offer me anything." No, no.
Yeah, right after you were humble, this one, of course, it came to my mind, oh, Jesus, something. Get all these, you know, poop in the sky and our own brother, and just give him something. They're all like, "Wait a minute, wait a minute, maybe this is well."
Hopefully, they can listen. So then it brings us to the next contrast, the other next tension. So we've got this between Gaius and Matthew and the new followers of Jesus, and then we go to Nicodemus's house. And they're packing up. She's all excited because she's going back to Jerusalem, going back to the life that she loves. And she knows that he's conflicted. So she's reassuring him, that's been her role in life, she's played that role wonderfully. "This is a great honor, you're the great Nicodemus, you're the wonderful teacher, you're the interpreter of the law. This is a great honor to you and to our people. Usually I get to read your remarks." "No, no, 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 I'm just going to be extemporaneous." And then she starts to talk about her family and what it was like when they learned that, how her daughter sang and how her song was beautiful, and her voice was different because she was carrying the child within her. And now, of course, the child's been born while they're in Capernaum, and she wants to get back for the circumcision and the naming. How wonderful it will be when you pronounce his name, and this will be your grandchild, and all these wonderful things. And she goes on about the sense of Sabbath, how it's about family, how their whole sense of religion is about family and how important that is. And she talks about how they would eat from her mother's china, and they would have these candlesticks and all these special elegant things about family. She says, "I love our life, I want to get back to it." And that now puts Nicodemus in tension because he's being called to a different family, the family of discipleship in Jesus, but he can't give up his family with his wife and all of his prestige that's waiting for him in Jerusalem. So the other tension is about what's family. And of course, we've seen their Shabbat dinner is very, very elegant and formal, where Matthew's is this friendly encounter on a whole different level of family. They're both family gatherings, but very different understandings of what they are. And that's the tension there. And so she says to Nicodemus, she said, "That Shabbat is about our family knit together around the table." "Isn't that, that's what they understand Shabbat to be? Isn't that what Jesus is doing with these disciples? Isn't it what we are as the chosen at the Eucharist? Family of grace, family of spirit, knit as one around a table." And it's, they don't even realize what they're doing. They're very, because the truth is the truth. It's always going to point to the Eucharist, even when they don't intend it to. Because that's the truth of who Jesus is. And then they have that great conversation about what he's going to say, and you can see he's still in conflict. He talks about what God sees and who God sees, and makes reference to Hagar, who was caught up in something that was not of her choice. And Nicodemus says, "Well, when we find ourselves on hard roads, we stumble, God finds us and comforts us." But Nicodemus says to his wife, "Well, what if He's the one that brings us to the hard road?" And that's when she said, "I love our life, I want to go back to it, please take me back to Jerusalem." And so that's where he has to go because that's what she's calling him to, that's his tension. Is he going to choose this family of Jesus or the family that he has in Jerusalem with the law and his prestige and all of the comforts of their time? And then the next episode is Gaius comes in to meet with Quintus. And then we realize he's still licking his wounds over Silvius. Silvius is the childhood rival who got delayed by a stampede of Jews because of what had happened in the healing of the paralytic and how the Romans dispersed the crowd. And so he had this whole infrastructure, he was going to be impressed about, impress Silvius about what he had learned and what he was going to do and how important he had become. And instead, he got berated because the Roman got delayed by the stampede of the Jews. You know, and he says, "You don't do that, we can't let that happen." And so he says, "Well, I see you alone, you know, you've replaced, you've got a replacement to be with Matthew. Well, I'm working with somebody, and we're hired, we're taking applications for his job." "What do you mean you're taking applications? Quit." "What do you mean he quit? How did you let him quit? He's a contractor, I have a choice. If he wants to quit, he can quit. You know, there's no choice there." So he talks about the man from the eastern ghetto, this Jesus of Nazareth. And so he's unhappy, he says, "I don't like that man." And then, of course, we see, then we come to the next day where they're having the honorarium for Nicodemus. And the Pharisee steps up, "We are honored by you, and we know the great..." And so he says to him, "As your reputation grows, so do my prospects." And so Nicodemus responds, "No, our work is for God, God chooses." He says, "Well, I have this passion that I've learned now. My passion is for false prophecy. This man at the house, he turned to me, he read my thoughts, he knew exactly what I was thinking in my mind, but he claimed to be God, and it's blasphemy, and you said nothing." So Nicodemus comes back to him, "Oh, I see now. It's always about politics and promotion with you." "No, it's not," he says, "it's about the law, and the law is God." And so he's going to defend the law because he's like Saul in today's, he's really a great figure of Saul. "It's about the law and what the law says, and this man claims to be God, and that's blasphemy." And he's got to be a false prophet in order to be able to claim that, this is untrue, and you said nothing. And so he says, "I'm going to petition for an investigation. So if I put this into Jerusalem, they're going to want to know, what did Nicodemus say? You're my teacher. Will you oppose me, will you support me? Because if you're going to oppose me, it's not going to go anywhere. Will you support me or not? Oh, yeah, it's all about politics and promotion." Well, and so then Nicodemus parting Chati, and "You have learned nothing from me." And he's been flattering him all along, "I learned so much from you, you're such a great teacher." And, you know, "You have learned nothing from me by what you do."
Father Peter?
Yes.
Do we ever know or do we ever learn after the resurrection whether Nicodemus ever went to believe in Jesus and follow that religion at all or never?
There are some traditions in the church that actually claim him as a saint. So there's a tradition that he actually became a believer following the resurrection. There's no proof of that in the Bible. He does again speak up in the Sanhedrin when James and Peter are brought in to the Sanhedrin after the miracle of the beautiful gate. And so Nicodemus is there as well. So, but, so there's a tradition that he eventually did become a believer. But that's not a biblical account, it's an extra biblical tradition that eventually he came to faith.
They do a beautiful job.
So, and then, of course, they have the wonderful interaction between Eden and their Lord. Excuse me, and it's really a wonderful appreciation of the role of the women in the life of the disciples. You know, we had asked, "So what about all these people that got left behind?" Said to you and one else. And so, and so we see the understanding of that, how the Lord anticipated that. You know, Simon's distracted, he's quiet in the camp, he's not saying anything. Why? Because they're getting ready to leave, and he knows he's leaving his wife alone with his sick mother. And he's not going to be there to help or to be able to provide, and how's that going to manage? You know, and so, and it's very telling, it's wonderful the way they wrote it. You know, "Simon, go in and, you know, spend some time with your mother-in-law." And then he turns to Eden and he says, "You saw it first. You saw what I saw, Simon, you saw it first. And so I admire, that's our connection. We have a bond because you and I saw the same thing." And he says, "And now I have to take care of this." "What do you mean? You know how tough it is to be with him and anything." "But to travel with a sick mother-in-law, I'm not doing that. No, no, I'll take care of it." So she knows, walking in, she knows what's going to happen, you know, and anticipates that. And then it's wonderful the way they present it, it really is almost word for line for line for the Scriptures. You know, actually, he calls a demon out of her, "Leave her," is what he says, "Leave her." And as she coughs, she sits right up, and she's like, "Who are you?" So you realize she had been possessed. "Who are you? Oh, my goodness, why am I lying down? Oh, no, no, we've got to get up." She gets up, "Whoa, whoa, take your tongue, oh, no, we've got to get something to eat. Does your friend like cheese?" You know, so she's running around already trying to, and that's the way of saying she's well again. She's her old self in so many ways by that. And then, of course, we realize that we get to the gate. And as they're there at the gate, they're waiting for them to gather, and as they all gather, of course, the Lord asks the question, we know, it seems to be rhetorical, you know, "Is everybody here, is there anybody else?" And of course, Nicodemus is just beyond the wall, and you see the torment, the conflict that he has. "Is there anybody else?" And he wants to go, but he can't. And then they find the bag of gold. And what does the Lord say? He says to them, "A friend of mine left that for us." And then he says, "You came so close." And Mary of Bagdala says, "What do you mean?" And he just ignores it. So in that interaction, he realizes Nicodemus isn't coming. He's left the money as his support, but he can't go with him. He has to go back with his wife to the life that they have in Jerusalem. "You came so close." And so that's the other side of the conflict. So there's two different levels of conflict, at least in my eyes, going on. What is the sense of family? Is family the neat, proper, polite gathering around the table? Or is family that raucous union of fellowship and of teasing that is rooted in a very deep love? So we see that, and it can be both sometimes, but there's that contrast between the very stylized, proper meal of Nicodemus and his proper life waiting for him in Jerusalem versus Jesus, who's bringing people to see God beyond what is the initial expectation. And then you have the contrast of, if anybody should have seen and known who Jesus is to follow him, it would be Nicodemus. He studied the law. He knew. He knew on one level, but he couldn't make the act of faith. But the others, who had so much less to understand and to believe, but needed the hope of it, they believe in him. And so the interesting thing is they show us, they show... And so the, the interesting thing is they show us, you show all of them leaving their homes. And you saw Mary Magdalene touching the mezuzah. Simon saying goodbye to Eden and to his, her mother. And you see everybody, Matthew locking his house, all of them getting ready to go. And Nicodemus, who's also going, but he's not going with Jesus, he's going back to Jerusalem. He's going back to what he came from, where the others are going on to something.
I think his wife made him feel guilty.
Yeah, she knew he was conflicted, yeah. And he really, it really was to choose her or, or Christ. Was, and she wasn't, and she knew that if he followed Christ, all of her prestige, all of her social standing would just be, she would never be the great Nicodemus's wife because he would have sold out to the, to the heretic, to that. So that's the, the conflict that's presented there in, in the parting. And they do it the wonderful way, the way that they show all of them leaving and that they're leaving family, they're all leaving family in different ways. Nicodemus is going back to his family. But the others are leaving family to become part of the family of Christ. That's what the chosen is. It's that new sense of family in, in who Jesus is. And, um, and then, of course, we see the, the final favor that he had asked Gaius is Matthew sends Gaius to his house. And they're, I'm not thrilled to see a Roman still just standing at their door. And they think Matthew's in some really big trouble. And he explains to them, he had two favors he had to do for Matthew. One is the key to his house, I don't want it, blood money. And Gaius says, I don't care what you do, you gotta take the key. Burn it down if you want. And he says, yeah, don't burn it down. That would be a message, don't burn it down. Do whatever you want with it. And then he gives them the, the dog. Well, what are we gonna do with the dog? You know? And, and Gaius says, you have to realize Matthew had a lot of enemies. And if Matthew's gone and they know that you're his family and you travel a lot, this is security for you. You, she needs the dog to be, so that as you travel, you know she's safe. You know, his point is, I have all my papers. And no, 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 I'm not talking about you when you travel. I don't know what you're leaving behind. So again, we're caught up with the idea about what are people leaving behind? And what's the provision of that? And how is that being taken care of? And it's helping to make, to root us that they didn't just walk away. There were people that were left behind and people who had to continue on in a life and a livelihood without them. And that they, in some ways, they could make provisions and in other ways, it was also still totally unexpected. And, and then where Gaius gives us a little hint that there's been this, um, this admiration of his for Matthew. Because he knows that if Matthew comes back with Jesus, that Quintus has already said that he wants Jesus arrested for questioning. And so Gaius says, if he comes back, contact me first. Oh, okay. I know some people that were fond of him. Yeah, I had a friend, asking for a friend. You know, it's the thing we do now, I'm asking for a friend. I know some people who were mildly fond of him. And then, of course, we go to the last scene, which is Jesus with the disciples. And Matthew's got the map and he's calculating almost how many steps they're gonna take. And he says, no, 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 we're going this way. You're going through Samaria, are you joking? No, they hate us, yeah. You know, and then they start going on about this and this and this. The line of our Lord is wonderful. None of you were alive for any of that. Why do you still hold on to that? It's not happened in any of your lifetimes. How many of us are still doing that in the 21st century? It wasn't part of your lifetime. Why do you still hold on to that? But we won't let go of those grudges and those resentments and the desire for the vengeance. And Lord says, no, 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 we can go, it's not safe. Did you join me to be safe? Did you join me to not take risks? You know, then if we're gonna have a discussion every time I make a decision, it's gonna take us a long time to get where we're going. So, you know, I, I'm making the call here, this is what we're doing. You either come with me or you don't. So of course, they all do. Then we see that meeting people and being welcomed. And then, of course, is the wonderful connection to, um, Fatiro at, at the, at the well. And they really modernize the dialogue, you know, where she struggles to get there. Jesus says, you know, can, can I, give me a drink? And she ignores him. And, um, did you hear me? I did, but you're a Jew, I'm a Samaritan and I'm a woman. Oh, I'm sorry, I should have said please. Sorry, I should have said please. You know, it's a very modern interaction. It really is a dialogue. And.
When her husband said please to her, remember when she came in?
No, she said please, they, he said, that's right, yes, he said please to her.
Now, they gave, they gave her a name.
They did. The, 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 these people did. She's not named in the Bible. Everybody has a name in the, in, in this series. I mean, Simon's wife's name is, is Eden, his mother-in-law has a name. I don't know who all, what all of them are.
Now, when she said she was gonna go tell everybody, would they listen to her?
Oh, they do. Oh, absolutely. That's part of the gospel. That's part of the gospel story.
A lot of them listened to her, though, because they failed to respect her.
That's part of what is the amazing transformation. Because when she comes with the news, she's a different woman. She is no longer embarrassed by their attitude of her. She is empowered by the love of Christ. And they recognize, what happened to you? Well, who are you? This is a different woman. So, and that's the interesting dialogue. So because, um, she says, um, um, she asks, she says to him, well, you asked for a drink. Wouldn't you be defiled by all, by this? Because for a Jew to drink from a Samaritan pottery would be to make him unclean. And so he answers, well, you wouldn't, even if you do, you'd ask me and I would give you living water. Well, are, are you braver than our father Jacob who gave us this well? I love the line, I know Jacob, I know Jacob. She's like, what? I know Jacob, who lived 5,000 years ago. The water I give will become a fountain, a, a spring of water rallying up. And then she kind of hesitates and he says, well, go get your husband. Which again, is from the Bible. Bring your husband and, and bring, come back. Well, I, I don't have a husband. And then, um, she starts, he starts to, he explains to her, I've come to break those barriers. And then he starts to tell her about her relationships, how they're all broken and the number of them, what had happened with them. And that she's talking, he's there to break those barriers. And her issue is, well, where do I go? You know, you can go anywhere, God is spirit. You know, it, it, the time is, is almost here. When it won't matter where you are, it will only matter that what you do, you do in spirit and truth to worship the living God. She says, I don't trust anyone anymore. Jesus has probably not given the life you had, some of the men you've been with. But you know this Messiah that you've spoken of, I need. You are the first that I tell. Oh, you picked the wrong person. No, he says, I came here just to meet you. I've planned this. Do you think it's an accident? I'm here at the well in the middle of the day? I knew you'd come now. I've been planning for this. And that's when she says to him, spirit and truth, it's not about mountains or temples. It's not. I'm gonna tell everybody. Yeah, I'm counting on that. And, yes.
I have a question because Jesus said to her that she was the first person he told. But then when all the apostles came back, the disciples came back, you heard Simon said, you told. So, because I was saying.
That demystified that he knew.
He knew because he had figured it out. Simon, Simon, when he, when, when Simon saw the miracle of fish that saved his butt with the Romans, he knew that this, that's why he says, leave me, I'm a sinful man. And he says, no, 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 come with me, I will make you fisheries of men. And when he meets with Eden and, um, he says, you know, he's called me to follow him. And, and Eden says to him, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry. You know, he says, we've waited all our life for the Messiah. And he's called you to be part of him? Well, why would I not want you to follow him? And he does the same thing to James and John. And as he calls them, they turn to Zebedee like, oh, we, we got a fishing business. What, what are we gonna do about supper? Mom's gonna be waiting for us. And Zebedee says, we waited all our life for the Messiah and you're worried about what your mother's cooking for dinner? No! The Messiah's just called you, go! So, they, so they deduced it of their own. See, they figured out, they came to that, even Nicodemus knew he was the Messiah. He didn't understand, he was, he was God in current. But he knew that he was what they were longing for. He knew that when he met John the Baptist. And that's what moved him to want to meet with Jesus. And when he met with him that night in that embrace, he knew who he was. He just couldn't commit. He could be, he was called, but he couldn't, he couldn't respond. He couldn't respond the way the others did.
Well, Nicodemus is true that he asked to put Jesus in.
No, that was Joseph of Arimathea. But Nicodemus, Nicodemus went to ask for the body to be released.
I thought Peter said that because Jesus kept saying, it's not time.
It's not time, it's right, you can't tell people yet. And then, you, you told her, so we can tell others. You know, well, we, we've got work to do. And of course, Peter's up, see, Peter thinks, okay, the battle's on, let's go! Yeah, it's not the battle he thinks it is. And that's what we'll see in, in, in the next, uh, series, season.
Come on, we're all gonna go and then use it, I'll make you right into that.
No, we're done, we're done until, we're gonna wait till this Omicron settles down. And then we'll see, we'll either start in March or we'll wait till August. We'll see how it's, how it's going.
I guess we have to wait.
Well, and that will just bring us a little closer then to season three. Because they're not gonna release season three until the fall. Because they're, they're only starting filming in March. So it's gonna, you figure it's gonna take them a few weeks to do the filming and then the editing of that.
And the writing. It looks like that was the, you know, having a wish. One thing he said on the stream is that most difficult, half of him, that he doesn't like at all, the writing. Oh, and that surprised me.
Well, because I think he would prefer it's more in this, he's more spontaneous in, as a producer. You know, there's one of those that, and if they can get into their character, then get into their character, the character will lead them through the series.
Well, I think what's happening to them, because when you look at something like this, it's so, so emotional. And so really, nobody has to tell them, there's no director that says, this is what I like you to do. Yes, they do it by themselves. And I think it's, it's the spirit of what they have got in them. And that's how they're doing so much.
Well, and when you see any of the interviews that, what they do with these people, that's very much, they really do get into their characters and the.
I remember when we started the last thing, when Jesus was talking. He remembered when he sees his mother all the time, so he's come to walk her around. And that's the first thing, nobody told him to do that. But he was, that was him.
Right. Wonderful, again, we went over, we've not finished on time, but, um, great discussion. So we'll pick up again, we'll see when we're gonna start, we'll obviously send a clock note, we'll put something in the bulletin. But, um, we'll be able to make that work somehow to be able to go forward.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, you're a good man.